I thank you everyone for joining us tonight. I'd like to open up tonight's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of all these many different lands across which we're coming to this meeting from. I'm here on Bunurang land today and I'd like to recognise that First Nations people have a strong connection to land, water, culture, and especially to animals, of course, and pay my respects to elders past and present, and especially to anyone of First Nations origin who's joining us today. Thanks everyone. Um. So there's a lot of stuff to get through tonight. So what I would say is I'm going to leave questions till the end unless there's something super sort of really relevant along the way. Feel free to put them in the chat as well and we will go through the chat as well. And if there's things that we need to follow up and come back to afterwards, Ruth's going to mark them down. And you know, if I need to follow up with you afterwards, I will. I'm also super happy to take questions after this. You know, if you want to, my emails on all of those slides, feel free to email me afterwards and I will do my best to answer or to put you in touch with someone who can answer you. And I also just want to say a massive thank you because this has probably been the most, like this is kind of like four consultations in one. It's been a massive undertaking doing this and I'm really hoping I don't leave any names out of this. But I wanted to say a huge shout out to Ruth, Annie, Tom, Eva, Ellie, Lindy, Jodie, Julie, Gail, Gary, Lee, Samantha, Miss Dave, and I think I forgot somebody. But all of you, if I have forgotten anybody, then I'm very sorry. But we are lucky enough to have a number of these people here tonight. So some of them might jump on when we get to sections that they are a little bit more expert on. There is also going to be a guide, which is almost finished. It should be out on our AJP website tomorrow. At first glance, this guide is ridiculously long. It's longer than most of the submissions we make. But what we've tried to do is put a little bit of information about every single section of it. So that if you're a bit stuck on something, you can go to the relevant section and look, we're not expecting that people are going to go through and answer every question, every section, you know, in detail. Because it will take, I mean, I'd love it if you did, but it's going to take you hours and hours and hours to do that. So we just wanted you to have somewhere where you could sort of go for information if that's what you wanted. If you would like to get involved in this consultation, but you want to do something much shorter or easier, that is perfectly valid. I will say that Animals Australia have put out a guide and they've also put out a template and you can basically like download it and sign it and send it in. And that's, you know, very valid and still means that you're having your say. But it does mean it's a little bit more of that sort of generic response. Whereas I'm hoping that as people, you know, that most of you will have a particular area or two that you're a bit more passionate about and that you might want to take the opportunity to sort of have your say on that particular section. Um. So. Some of the, like, some of it might feel like I'm being a little bit, a little bit too general or something. Again, if you want me to, I don't know, speed up, slow down, give more detail or something, please just let me know. Because as I said, there's quite a bit of information. I wasn't quite sure how to, how to fit it all into an hour and still make it seem manageable. Now, how on earth do I share my screen and why do I still have trouble with this after five years of COVID?
Down the bottom, the third icon from the left says share screen, the green button.
Okay, so then I'm sharing. Please. Oops, might help if I went to the first slide. That's, that's the last slide. Okay. Hoping, hoping you can all see a slide now.
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Okay. Yeah. So this is the Animal Care and Protection Act, Animal Care and Protection Laws, which was previously POKTA. I will try to use POKTA if I'm referring to sort of the previous act and use ACPA or Care and Protection Act if we're talking about it currently, but I will sometimes slip up and use them a bit interchangeably. So I'm apologising in advance for that. So the agenda is just to talk about, just a brief background to POKTA, talk about what's new in this new act. Talk about the structure of this consultation, just so you can get an understanding of what these opportunities are. Then talk a bit about how you can give feedback on the act, feedback on the regulations, feedback on the codes of practice, feedback on the regulation development, and then questions. So POKTA is something many of you will be familiar with because it has been around since 1986. It is our bit of legislation that is supposed to prevent cruelty to animals. In reality, it doesn't do a whole bunch because it essentially, you know, like they say, you can't do this except under these circumstances. So there's a whole bunch of exceptions and exemptions which allow activities to happen that, you know, use and abuse animals. It's been in place since 1986. And it provides, it's sort of the overarching. So this, we've got the act and then underneath which sort of says, this is what the law is. Then it's got the regulations which say like, this is how we apply the law. And then it's got the codes of practice which sort of goes into a bit more detail about like, this is how we explain how we use, apply the law. And that's how it's structured currently. A lot of it is, is based around sort of like punishing things that have gone, that have happened rather than trying to actually prevent cruelty. So that's what this is supposed to, this sort of update is supposed to fix. And one big change is that it becomes, it still has the act as overarching, that's now the Animal Care and Protection Act. Then we have the regulations, but some of the codes of practice will move into the regulations. And the reason that that's important is because then they become like enforceable. So then they, you're legally bound to follow those things. So that's actually a big important change that we are happy about. But some of the bits of codes of practice will stay kind of as codes of practice, except now we call them guidelines instead. Just to confuse things. Oops, too many. Um. So. Some of you might remember this from, from previously. So this is a, this has been this ongoing consultation. So I think this is the third stage of the consultation that we're up to. The, in 2022, many of you would have put in submissions and that was where they were sort of seeking feedback on, I think, 15 or 16 areas. And then that's what your feedback and the bits that they ignored, what they've used to actually create this new act. So the one big important thing is that animal sentience will be recognised for the first time in Victorian law. So at the moment, the only other state that does that is ACT. They did expand the definition of animals. So now it includes like fish and octopuses and that's kind of cool too. And we now will have enforceable regulations. As I said, some of those voluntary codes of practice will move into being enforceable regulations. We don't know what yet though. So that's why it's important to be giving feedback on the bits of the codes of practice that you find important because hopefully the bits that seem to strike them as, you know, more people say these are important. They're the bits that will be sort of upgraded in terms of legislation. There are new care requirements for animals under a person's care. Seems like that's a no brainer and something we should have always had. But anyway, now we have care requirements. And there is a new cruelty offence. So they had some cruelty offences. They've just created an extra one for like sort of the most heinous types of cruelty. And I would say none of this is going to feel like enough, like it's, you know, there are some positive changes. It's still not where we want it to be, but we sort of want the act to go through so we can get to the next stage of regulations so that hopefully that's where there's, there's more scope for sort of how these things are enacted and more scope to create better change. But these five things are still pretty good. And just a note of some things to sort of keep at the back of your mind as we're, as we're going through this is that the animals are classed very differently based on where they fall in the law. So the same animals can be treated differently under different acts. So, you know, kangaroos for pet food are different to kangaroos in petting zoos are different to kangaroos for shot for ATCWs. You know, a companion animal duck is different to a duck on a farm is different to a duck in the wild being recreationally shot. Same animals, they're just treated differently under different bits of legislation. And so for these reasons that many animals will be covered by multiple bits of legislation. You know, unfortunately, animals are still exempt from the level of protection that we would really like them to have. And just another consideration is that really unless we can enforce these guides, like unless we have sufficient authorities and frameworks to be able to enforce all these acts and regulations, I mean, they're essentially useless if no one's monitoring them. If no one's, you know, punishing people for breaking laws, then, you know, we can have the best legislation in the world, but it's not actually, you know, helpful. So just to talk about the, the structure briefly. So as I said, it actually, it actually feels like four consultations in one. So you can, the, the act, the new act has been drafted, so it's written out in its proper legal language. This is now the last chance to give feedback on this. So there have been previous stages. This is now the last stage. And there's two ways to do it. You can fill in a form or you can write your own like freehand submission and upload that. It is important to note that they are only looking for feedback on the language in the act, which is quite frustrating because you read things and you're like, well, that's stupid. I don't want that in there.
Matt, sorry, can I just interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
Can we please refer to it as the bill? It's not an act. You keep using the word act and it concerns me because when people make their submissions, they'll refer to the act. So an act is something that then is enforced. This is the bill.
Yes, thank you, Leanne.
Important distinction. Sorry.
No, no, you're, you're right. So the bill is because it's like a proposed act, correct? So it'll be an act once it's actually passed, but at the moment it's a bill. So it's like, it's, it's getting ready to become an act. And so yeah, you've got two ways to give feedback on that. But it is focused just on the language being used in it. You can give feedback on the regulations and this is pretty much your first chance to do that. You can give feedback on the codes of practice. And again, this is the first opportunity to do that. So just bearing in mind that if you feel a bit frustrated by not being able to give the type of feedback you'd like, there will be other stages of this consultation, even if it's months or potentially years away, to be honest, but there will be other stages. And this thing, I don't know what to call it, but regulation development. It's kind of the second stage because there was some opportunity to give feedback in that previous 2022 consultation. So thoroughly, I think it's too late for me to change all the acts to bills for now, but I'll change it in the other thing. But anyway, the first question, so, so if you're giving feedback on the bill, the first questions are just going to be the questions about you. Just, you know, answer these quickly and move on to the bits where we really want to be giving feedback, I guess. Um. So it asks you, you know, what's your involvement with animals? There's a few to choose from. Do you live, you know, rurally or regionally? Are you making a submission as an individual or organisation? This is important because if you do belong or volunteer with an organisation, you of course have the option of making your own personal submission and you may make a submission on behalf of your organisation as well. If you're a spokesperson for that organisation, just means you can kind of double your voice. And if you want it to be confidential, because these will usually be published, although they'll be de-identified, but they will be published. And so if you, for whatever reason, don't want that, make sure you say you would like it to be confidential. So how do you make your submission about it? So if you're talking about it, you need to refer to exactly which part of the bill you're talking about. So don't just say, I don't like the bit about cruelty. It needs to say like part three, division two clause, whatever. And you need to be very specific about what you're giving feedback on. And I said, if you do just the submission, there's no word limit. You can just write it up in your own, you know, in your own Word or Google Doc and then upload it. And some people might find that easier because you're not constrained by words or whatever. But you do need to then, I guess, give it a little bit of structure like we would with any, with any submission. You know, try and give a beginning, middle and an end and set it out very clearly. If you choose to fill in the form, it has 15 parts that it goes through. You can do one of those parts. You can do 15 of those parts. If you are working on it and you leave the computer even for days and you go back, it will have saved your work. That said, I never trust these things and I always copy and paste and keep it in a, in a Google Doc. But I have tested it and it does leave it there for days, even if you close it and go back into it. There is a 750-word limit. So again, if it's something like, for example, if I was writing about, you know, ducks. If it's something that you're really, if you've got a lot to say, then you're better off just making your own submission. But if you just have like one particular section of it that you want to give some feedback on, then yeah, you're better off just picking that survey and just picking that particular slot and just, you know, putting your feedback into that one box. So considering that none of us, barring maybe one or two of us are lawyers here, we have tried to sort of just pick out five sections that stood out for us as being areas where there's room for improvement. Now, there are certainly more and I'm very happy if others have other ideas, if you'd like to, you know, share them with the group. But we just thought, because it's already hard enough trying to read legal documents and write about them. We thought we'd try to just pick out five that stood out for us. I see that Annie's here, so if I'm not doing this justice, Annie, feel free to jump in. And the first one is just relating to language generally. So the document throughout uses, so that this is the bill, says, you know, approved industry arrangements and exceptions. Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we don't want there to be a whole bunch of exceptions. Ideally, we'd like there not to be because the, this is, you know, where we say, well, you can't be cruel to animals, except you can't be cruel to animals, you can't be cruel to ducks unless you plan to shoot them. Can't be cruel to kangaroos unless you plan to shoot them. You can't be cruel to octopuses, octopi, unless you plan to eat them. So it's all these sort of exceptions that we're objecting to. So, you know, no, they're not exactly going to just get rid of them all, but it doesn't. You know, I think it is important to say that these are the things that we object to. They need to know sort of where the, like where the community sits. So even just putting in a sentence to say, you know, that you're not keen on the fact that there are all these exceptions that you want your, your, well, like, you want your legislation that prevents animal cruelty to actually say, don't be cruel to animals. So I think that's a really important point to make. And approved industry arrangements. I mean, what does that mean? That just means that industry gets to make their own arrangements for what they think is or isn't cruel. So objecting to both of those things, these are the, this is the language that allows animals to be used for sport, for entertainment, for experiments. So removing them or minimising them would be a good thing. It sends a strong message about where sort of the community fits. And so part three, Animal Care and Protection Obligations, section two, the care requirements. So three things that we've found that are not, not great about here. And again, if you're right, all of this will be in the guide in a bit, in more detail than I'm going into it now. So if these are areas that you'd like to talk about, you will be able to access the guide from sometime tomorrow to, you know, read about this in a bit more depth. And so problem number one, this section doesn't specify that access to the biological medium that supports the animal's physiology must be provided. So what does this mean in practice? Well, for example, ducks need access to dunking water. This is important for them to stay healthy. It helps with their immune function. However, farmed ducks do not get access to this and there's no requirement for them to get access to this. So including something in the act that would require them, that would require all animals to be given access to whatever medium they need to stay healthy would be a good addition. And it doesn't specify that animals must be allowed the full range of movement and, and socialisation that they are again required for their normal sort of biological behaviours. So for example, chickens can be held in battery hang, cages their whole lives. Sows are kept in stalls. So there's no requirement for animals to be allowed to be kept in conditions that allow them, you know, for example, there's no requirement for sows to be allowed to turn around. They're allowed to be kept in conditions that do not allow to, that do not allow them to turn around for their entire lives. So, you know, adding that this need for animals to be kept in conditions that allow them just to perform normal physiological and bi, sorry, behavioural behaviours would be a good thing to add. And number three, the act doesn't allow, doesn't guarantee animals the right to be nurtured by their mothers. So they are taken away at much younger ages than they would normally be weaned or that they would normally sort of move away. Again, using pigs as an example, I think off the top of my head. Normally at about the sort of three month mark, they might kind of move away from their mothers. But they're not, they're forcibly removed at the four week mark in, in intensive animal agriculture practices. So again, adding a requirement for them to be allowed to, to stay with their mothers for that, for the amount of time that would be natural for them would at least lessen the cruelty. And we know it's terrible. I mean, you see all the behaviours of like piglets, like all the tail biting and that sort of behaviour is all caused by the stress of being removed from their mothers early. So part three, division two, acts of cruelty and aggravated cruelty. So in the bill, it says that acts of cruelty are acceptable if they're considered reasonable. So what's a, what's a reasonable definition of cruelty? I mean, I would say that the definition of all the people in this meeting is very different to the definition of like a slaughterhouse worker. And there's not a, there's not, there's not a clear definition of that. And also considering that in slaughterhouses, there is, you know, a lot of compassion fatigue. For example, there might be a lot of behaviours that they consider reasonable because of the environment that they're in, that certainly even a general member of the public. So not even holding that up to our standard, but the, but even a general member of the public would not consider acceptable. So the word reasonable needs to be removed from this part of the bill. And an addition that would be useful would be the implementation of CCTV in intensive environments and abattoirs. And part three, division two, 211D, person abandons the animal. Again, I know there's people in this room now who know more about this than me, so feel free to jump in if you'd like to say something. Now, we don't want people to be able to abandon their animals, 100%. However, having this in there without any qualify. So there's a whole bunch of exceptions and exemptions we don't like. This is the one where we actually would like there to be an exemption. So this, this wording around people cannot abandon the animal also means that we cannot do trials of trap, neuter and return programmes. So it would be appropriate to add that there should be an exemption for trap, neuter, return or return to field programmes to be run as long as they're done by trained, qualified officers or specialists in cat management. Because this would certainly enable us to be a bit kinder to community cats and also to do, you know, to start, I don't know, working against the war on cats currently. And part five, division three, carrying out certain procedures on animals. So it lists all these procedures from A to J and some of them we would agree with. For example, is it okay to can, to carry out procedures on animals if it's for therapeutic reasons? Well, I'd say yes, and I'm sure most people here would too. But is it okay to conduct them for cosmetic reasons? And so I, you know, six out of the 10 reasons that are listed are really aimed at just for the betterment of farmers and workers, not for the animals. They're to do with profit and with using the animals. They're, they're nothing to do with the animal's health. And therefore, language wise, we should be getting rid of these. Again, are they likely to suddenly get rid of six out of 10 ways of performing procedures? No, but saying that you believe they should, again, sends the message that kind of this is the, you know, this is where the community sits on these things.
I think this one is on VIVA section two. Would you say so, Matt? They're carrying out certain procedures?
Yes, one of them, one of them at least. I'm just looking through the list of them.
Yeah, just, just sort of, sort of.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. I think we've covered those. Oops. As I said, there are certainly other areas that you can pick on, but just be aware that it is really around the language that they're wanting feedback at this late stage. And so if you're just saying like, I don't like all of it, they're probably just going to ignore whatever you're saying and it's kind of a waste of your time. So trying to pick on the, the points where we know that the language is poor and is, you know, creating more sort of loopholes or more ways to harm animals is the best way to focus on. Okay, so then we move on to the regulations. Now, this is a different section. Like when you go into the consultation, you'll see that you can click on the left, which is like make a submission on the draft bill. And then you click on the right and this is make a submission on the regs. And then this has all the, all the other bits that I'm going to talk about are in that bit on the right. So it has listed 10 separate areas that you're able to give feedback on. And I'm just going to very briefly go through each of them. Again, there are many more points to go through in the, in the guide to help. The way it works is it will say, do you believe that the current regulations are adequate for each of the areas? And then you can tick that you think that they're fit for purpose. So the regulations are great. They need some updating or they need significant updating. I mean, I would just put they all need significant updating because we all know that, you know, the regulations do not protect animals enough. But of course, that is an individual decision for you all. And it will then say, like, say you ticked, let's go back for a sec. Say you ticked transportation of animals, number one. And then you ticked sheep, including pain relief formulas. So if you ticked those two, it would then come up and say, you indicated that transportation of animals needs significant updating. Can you describe the updates you'd like to see? Now be aware, this only gives you a 1,500 character limit, which is about three quarters of a page. Now, that may be plenty for some of you, but if you wanted to say heaps and heaps and heaps, it does, it actually doesn't give you a whole bunch of scope. And at this point in time, they haven't said that we can actually write separate submissions to this. I'm still trying to find out if there's a way that we can do that, but the way it sits at the moment, we can't. So just be aware that you are sort of limited to that, but it is for each one. So if you picked all 10 of those regulations, you can write 1,500 characters for each. It does mean you're also paid off just doing it in dot points. And so the way we structured in the guide was we just made a couple of comments on, or just a brief comment on sort of what are the issues with each of these? And then we made like a list of suggestions of points that you might want to include. As I said, they're much more detailed than on here, but issues around transportation of animals, obviously the conditions on the trucks, the crowding, the lack of access to food and water. This is particularly relevant, I guess, to sheep being transported. And there's a whole bunch of things that you can suggest, but yeah, things like having maximum, you know, maximum loads of how many sheep can be on there, speed limiting how fast those trucks can travel, loading and unloading ramps, like how steep or slippery or what they can be made out of, access to food and water, length of time that they can be transported. All of these things, you know, you can make a bunch of dot points about and fit in, you know, what needs, what needs to be improved. And again, as I said, because this is the first stage of, of feedback on the regulations, what you're saying is at this stage is really important because I think this will help to guide which bits will move into that enforceable regulation stage and which bits. Oh no, sorry. These are all regs. Anyway, ignore what I just said. That will apply to codes of practice. Next, tethered, well, it's still important because they still need to know what is important to people, but it's already enforceable. Tethered animals. So this mainly applies to like dogs being tied up. And again, there's two types of tethering, like tethered animals can be just fixed in one spot or they might be on something that can move around. But again, you know, they can be extremely stressed. Um, but again, you know, they can be extremely stressed, they're at risk of injury. Um, they may not have access to shade or straw or water, there's no current requirement for how long they can be there for. So what we would be suggesting is that animals should only be tethered temporarily. Um, so like the short periods of time and, you know, there are alternatives, for example. Um, I think Ruth's suggestion was that they could be in a, you know, in a sort of any enclosed area where dogs can still move around and still have some autonomy over their behaviour. And if they do need to be tethered, then don't just suddenly tether them for four hours or six hours, but build up to it gradually and make sure that the conditions are, you know, safe and that the animal is not exhibiting signs of, of stress throughout that. And number three is sheep, including pain relief for musing. I mean, we could probably do a a um webinar just on this one topic. Um, but essentially, surgery without anaesthetic. It is unnecessary. If better practices are employed, then sheep don't need to be mulesd. Um, and some of the suggestions you can make are, you know, around that, about employing better farming and husbandry practices. So that is sort of is not necessary. Um. Banning immersion dipping, um if any of you were at the ARF and saw the ga- saw the video that Gary shared of how long sheep are kept under for, um like kept under the chemicals for immersion dipping, it's quite horrific. So this is a practice that should actually be banned, like there's no way to make it better. Um and mandatory shade and shelter, I mean, again, it's just a no brainer. Uh, number four, so the sale and use of netting for fruiting plants. So again, this is the netting that is often around uh fruit trees in people's gardens. Um, there were changes to this a couple of years ago, I forget exactly when. So now the netting, like you have to not be able to stick your finger through it, basically, so the netting has to be small. The issue is that birds um and bats get, get trapped in it, they get injured. Um, because they're just trying to get access to food, especially with like the, the crisis in, in bat food at the moment. So they're sort of moving further away from their areas where they live and, and moving into more suburban areas and then getting trapped and caught and injured and, and killed. Um, a lot of people don't know about this though, so they have the same netting that they use year in, year out, and people just aren't aware that there are these regulations around, you know, they may be using illegal fruit netting. So there needs to be better, there needs to be better enforcement and better education and better awareness raising about this. Um, the other thing is that while there's regulations around fruit netting, fruit tree netting, there's no regulations around building netting. So a lot of buildings will have netting across the top of them, like across the whole building um or around, I don't know, bits of architecture that they care about or around vents or windows. And again, birds can become trapped in this. And there was a recent case where some pigeons were trapped and it was very difficult to get them out, so thank you to the people who have been working on that. Um, so I just think, again, it's a no brainer to include all types of netting in this regulation. Um, there's no difference between netting on a tree or netting on a building in terms of the risk to animals. Uh twisted mouthpieces for horses. Um, as the name suggests, they sound horrible, they are painful, they apply too much pressure. They are currently prohibited under the regulations. Um, but the fact that they've included this as a regulation to make comment on is a little bit weird and a little bit worrying. Um, I'd say the number one suggestion you want to make is that they should stay prohibited. Um, but also that there should be increased monitoring to make sure that people actually aren't using them. As I said at the start, all the regulations and acts and everything in the world, you know, they can be written as well as possible, but if no one's monitoring them, then they're essentially useless. Um, so traps, um, these are exactly as horrible as they sound, you know, the, the stories you may have, you know, the, the traps that close over a, the leg of a box or something like that where an animal ends up then, you know, gnawing its own foot off to escape, well, this is the regulation that relates to that. Um, they should just be banned. The only sort of traps that should be permitted um are non-lethal traps, and there are some uses for that. For example, if you are trying to, you know, if you're trying to catch a cat with kittens, you are going to need, you know, unless you're really quick, you're probably going to need to be able to catch them in a trap. But these are humane traps and they are intended for, you know, the powers of good and not the powers of evil. Yeah, I think just a simple ban all, um, ban all lethal traps is pretty clear there. Um, now, shock devices, um, Ruth, did you want to speak to this?
Yep, okay.
Thanks.
All right, shock collars are used as a punishment technique in an attempt to stop or modify a behaviour, mainly in dogs. Um, studies and evidence of dog trainers shows that shock collars can cause fear and anxiety and even fear aggression in dogs, they lead to behavioural issues and a breakdown in the human animal bond. Unfortunately, shock collars are still allowed to be used under the supervision of a dog trainer or a vet. But only trainers, in my view, who are not very well educated are actually going to talk about using a shock collar on an animal. So some of the things that we'd like you to consider writing about, I guess, is at the moment, we've got a campaign to to ban shock collars in Victoria at the moment. So if you could push that, that we want them banned, we want them not to be available um in all circumstances. We want the public to be educated that they cause physical and psychological harm to dogs, even under the instruction of a trainer. And there are people that vehemently argue that shock collars are unnecessary, even nowadays. Um, we have to recognise that dog training is not a, a regulated industry in Victoria. Anybody can call themselves a dog trainer.
Hmm.
Um. And we need to push, I suppose, the benefits of science-based and force-free methods of training. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Um, and yeah, I guess this is the good part in here in the regs is that you can actually write much more freely as, as opposed to with the bill, you ju- you can only comment on the, on the language, which is frustrating. Here you can actually say what you want improved. Um, and that's a little bit more freeing. Uh, number eight, rodeos and rodeo schools. Well, animals don't buck naturally. They buck because they prod them and poke them and, and tighten straps around them and do all sorts of other horrible things to make them do that. Um. So, um, all, all of those things that, that, all of those cruel things that they do to animals to make them buck should be banned. And then animals won't buck and rodeos will be boring and no one will go to them anymore and they'll be gone. I mean, I wish it was that simple, but you know what I mean. Keep doing that. Um, number nine, uh so this is scientific procedures. So, yeah, I mean, this, this is relating to animal experimentation. Um, again, I think we can all probably say quite a lot about this without needing to look it up, but there's a hot you, you're putting animals in terrible, horrible, horrific uh situations where they're forced to feel pain, fear harm. And the results of these tests don't always apply to humans anyway. Um, we want some specific things that we want to ban, uh we want to ban the worst of the tests. So these are the forced swim test and the forced smoking tests, and also they should cease funding for these. Um, but yeah, those two tests in particular, especially cruel, you know, knows about the forced swim test, it's where you're um, they give antidepressants to mice and make them swim and uh basically until they give up. And that's a measure apparently of like how hard they fight to save their lives is apparently a measure of how effective antidepressants are. Um, that said, the results are never used for anything. Um, and, you know, when they're in that sort of fearful situation, um, you know, you can't, you, you just, those results are ridiculous. Um, heritable defects, um, so these are putting the, I don't know, they're putting certain traits in certain ways that animals look over the welfare of animals um and can lead to pain and health issues throughout their lives. Um, what our suggestion is, is that the list of things that are considered heritable defects should be expanded. And um in the guide, we've got a list of, um, what some other, um, things that could be included. Um, okay, then we move on to the codes of practice. There are twenty seven codes that they have listed here, twenty seven. Um, and again, it's similar to the previous one where it says, do you consider the code of practice for blah, 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 adequate in its current form? Um, or does it need updating? So you can pick as many of those codes as you want in that one dropdown menu. You can pick all twenty seven, you can pick two of them. The one thing to be aware of is that the feedback, it only gives you one feedback box for all of them. And there's fifteen hundred characters total. So again, you've got three quarters of a page to write about twenty seven codes of practice, potentially. Now, I think most people are not going to write about twenty seven, you might pick out one that interests you and then you can make a few dot points about it. Um. But just keep that in mind when you're thinking about how you want to give feedback or which ones, you know, really are important to you, or which ones are about issues that are um, you know, that are important to you. And they're things like the hunting of animals, the keeping of reptiles. Um, intensive rabbit farming, sheep farming, transport of animals, um, birds in cages. Um, it's all these sorts of codes. So, um, you can write about them in that. You know, you can pick whichever one you want to write about, for example, hunting of animals. Um, make a few points about what you think needs updating. Um, or you could just make some general comments about codes of practice and, and how they can be improved. Um, and we've made some suggestions on both throughout that guide, so you can do it either way. And yeah, this is the bit that I was saying before, is that remember that some of these parts of the codes of practice will be merging with the regs and they will become enforceable. And so I think what you write here is important because it's letting them know what other things that people consider more important. Like what are the issues, what are the, what are the bits that stand out? What, what made you put pen to paper or, you know, fingers to keyboard to write about? So at the end of the codes of practice, it then goes on to this bit that I call regulation development. Um, where it then talks about these four new sort of requirements that are, that are in this updated bill. Um, and these are the care requirements, the changes to specific offences, the restricted procedures and the specified classes of conduct. Um, so yeah, you kind of think that it's over after the codes of practice, but there's a whole other section. Um, so the care requirements are nutrition, physical environment, health and behavioural interactions. And this again gives you spots where you can write, like, you know, if you say that you care about nutritional care requirements, then it gives you a dropped, you know, like a box to write, you know, what you think should be improved. Um. And again, this gives you fifteen hundred characters to write, so three quarters of a page roughly on nutrition. You, three quarters of a page on environment, three quarters of a page on health, three quarters of a page on behavioural interactions. Um, so again, it gives you a little bit more scope to have your say about things. Um. And I guess this is where you can just really be talking about the things that matter to you. Um, so, you know, animals should have access to, to food at all times and places that suit their natural behaviours. Food should be used as a punishment, they should have nutritional food and not, as often happens to animals in intensive animal agriculture. You know, they're given food to, or, you know, or to like chickens in intensive um, animal agriculture, and they're given food to fatten them up essentially, rather than food that is nutritionally, um you know, what they need. Um, so saying that the care requirement for nutrition should be that they're given nutritional food, um again, sounds like a no brainer, but is an important point to make. Um, physical environment, they should be safe from danger, they should have specific, um, sorry, sufficient stimulation and they should be given sufficient space and to, to conduct their na- their natural behaviour. So this is where we can talk about things like, um, sow stalls again. Um, so there's, for the same sort of points or, or things that you're interested in, there's multiple points throughout this consultation where you can be raising these points or raising these concerns and issues. Um, their health, so this should be just around them having, um, you know, animal guardians should be required to provide a certain level of medical care and treatment for animals within their care. Um. And behavioural interactions, um, so that can be interactions with other animals, but also the, the sort of minimum standard of what sort of behavioural interactions they should be able to expect from their interactions with humans. Um. Uh, sorry, yep. And then it asks, do you have any concerns about the care requirements? Um, well, very simply, yeah, that they won't be adequately enforced or that they won't go far enough. Um, or that they might potentially lower the current standards, which already aren't good enough. So again, you can just make, there's some room just to make some general comments on care requirements as well as on each of the specific four. Um, then we move on to specific offences. I actually found this quite annoying because it gives you these four points and then it asks you to prioritise them. Um, so we've put our suggestion in there, um. So this is for, essentially, if people fail to meet their care requirements and there are acts of cruelty towards animals, then how do we prioritise? Like as they're writing the regulations, what should be prioritised? So the four options they've given are addressing common issues, filling the gaps, regulation over prosecution and proactive prevention. I mean, you kind of want to say all of them are important, but they're, you know, asking you to rank them. So we put proactive prevention first, filling the gaps second, um, addressing common issues third, and then regulation over prosecution last. But I could, I could see that there could be arguments for doing them in a different order as well. Um. And then it just, again, a general question. What improvements or changes would you like to see for the care and protection of animals? So, yeah, you can choose to, as I said, this, this whole, this is like four big consultations in one. You could choose to just write about nutrition and not fill in any of the rest of this. Um, or you could choose to write about a number of things and make general comments. So there's a lot of scope depending on how much time you want to give this. And again, what areas are your particular passion? Um, we move on to restricted procedures. And again, it's got these, this is probably the question I hated the most in this, but it's got these, um five, I think, yeah, five, um, considerations. Um, and these are for the procedures that shouldn't be conducted by a vet. Well, quite frankly, I think that basically all procedures should be conducted by a vet. Um. So. I'm not sure, I was, I'm currently, I'm tempted to just label uh my first choice, which is procedures undertaken by other expert practitioners, so saying that, yep, we support like, you know, uh vet, sorry, like animal dentists doing dentistry work. But other things like common husbandry procedures, uh procedures in standards, procedures regulated elsewhere and practical concerns. I'm I'm really not quite sure how to prioritise those. And at this point, I'm leaning towards leaving them out and then making a comment just along the lines of procedures on animals should only be conducted by people who are trained to do so, e.g. vets. The other consideration is if it's not done by a vet, then there's very, there's limitations in what type of pain relief or anaesthesia can be used um because of the regulations around access to those medications. So it's not even just about the skill level, even though that's a consideration, but it's about the, the type of care that they're going to be receiving. Um, sort of aftercare and preparation care for this.
Um, Nash?
Yes.
Oh, good, you can hear me.
Yeah.
Hi, Annie. Good. Hi there, I've, um, I've dialed in on my mobile because, um, I found my audio on the computer wasn't working for some reason. So, um, yeah, I'm just wanting to, um, have a few minutes to talk about the poultry standards, if that's okay.
Yep, can I just quickly do, um, 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 section F? And then, and then, and then I've pretty much finished and then I'll throw it over to you.
Okay, it's seven minutes true.
Oops, okay, I'll be quick. Um, the last one out of these regulation development questions, um again, actually probably gives you quite a bit of scope because it just mean, it lists these things and then it says which of these activities should be con- And then it says which of these activities should be considered for more detailed regulation. Again, I'm going to say all of them, you know, killing, wounding or capturing animals should have really detailed regulations around it. You know, exhibiting animals, keeping animals in intensive environments. So that's, that's a very broad way of talking about all intensive animal agriculture. Um, even if you just did a couple of dot points for these, it would be great. To, you know, this is at the very end of this very long consultation, but it would be great to be still including things. And again, we've made suggestions for things you can include in this, in the guide. Um, so yeah, four things to prioritise, but then these, one, two, three, four, five, these seven areas give you a, a box for each of these seven. To say where you think, um, there needs to be more detailed regulation.